My microphone's not on. Calling the meeting back to order, we are under number 14, Final Actions, R-19142. And this is sponsored by Counselor Penya, Counselor Davis, and Counselor Sanchez. If one of these sponsors would like to discuss this?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Vice President. R-142 amends the adopted CIP program of the City of Albuquerque by approving new projects, supplementing current appropriations, and changing the scope of existing projects. I'll move a do-pass.
Second.
Okay, councilors, we have a motion for approval and a second. And, let's see, I think we have someone who's signed up to speak also. So I guess we can hear from our speaker first, if that's okay. Tademinski?
Again, my name, Tademinski. Well, what is new? Well, more project, more new project. Take it away, that is, take it away from other project, hundred thousand, another hundred thousand, another hundred thousand, and open new project. Well, why? Why? Well, they took it because they gave it more, appropriated this time more, for example, family, community services. So anyway, that's what is it with these politicians. They are such corrupt that, do we have honest politician? No. They are crooked, corrupted, manipulated. That's what is politics. That's all I come to say. Thank you.
Thank you. There's, I think we have some amendments to this particular one. I have one amendment. I don't know if any councilors have any other. I don't see any others in the packet.
Madam President, I think we actually do have a packet of amendments tonight that are numbered A through I.
Oh, do we have a whole packet?
And they're numbered in order that I think we ought to take them.
I only saw my one.
Oh, that's fine. I think they're numbered in order from A through I, in the order that we propose that we take them, because I think they cascade upon each other, and I think it would begin with Counselor Winter.
Okay. I have the packet now. I didn't see that. So Counselor Winter, floor amendment number one.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I move floor amendment number one to our dash nineteen dash one forty-two. And on this amendment, on page five, after line five, insert the following of the amount reserved for Channel Road Project two million, bill released and reserved as follows: one million for improvements to Wyoming Boulevard north of Alameda, and one million for road deficiency projects as determined by the mayor and/or the Department of Municipal Development. Channel Road is a project in my district, so I'm just taking money out of one of those and putting it toward Wyoming.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for floor amendment number one. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying yes? Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Counselor Penya? Are you on the line?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So Counselor Penya, so that was unanimous. Floor amendment number two, and this is Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. For amendment number two, on page one, after line fourteen, insert the following: Whereas two twelve one, ROA nineteen ninety-four establishes the definition for infrastructure deficiencies. The definition adopted through R-2037, section nine, paragraph C, that states deficiency projects are projects that correct inadequate service, provide system backup capability, or minimize downtime. And number two, on page five, after line five, asserting, inserting those various appropriations, which accounts for $750,000 for each council district except District Eight, because we just did an appropriation amendment for that district for Counselor Winter. I'm sorry, District Four. My apologies.
District Four?
Yes.
Just for clarification.
So every other, every other district would end up with $750,000 in new transportation tax allocations to construct roadway improvements that correct inadequate service, provide backup capacity, or minimize downtime. And that's for all districts except District Four, since we just did that appropriation.
Okay, and there's a motion and a second by Counselor Jones. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying yes? Yes? Counselor Penya? Counselor Pen?
Yeah.
Okay, so any opposed? No. That passes unanimously. And our next floor amendment is floor amendment number three, which is R-19142. Counselor Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. This is more of a technical amendment, and it reads one on page five, delete lines three and five, and replace it with the following: The scope of the project is expanded to include but not limited to the Ladera Road project from Coors to Gavin, including construction of bike lanes, narrowing of medium roadways, rehabilitation, striping, signing, storm drainage improvements, and landscaping.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for floor amendment number three. Any discussion? Seeing none, all signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Penya? Okay, any opposed? Nope, that passes unanimously. Floor amendment number four, and this is Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And the bill that we had, the amendment we had before, that was Channel Road, so this isn't the same road, this is Chapel Road, which is also in my district, but it's on page four, delete lines fourteen and fifty. And this amendment will maintain the scope of the 2013 GeoBond project for Chapel Road in lieu of expanding it for citywide projects. So I move a do-pass.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all signify by saying yes? Yes?
Yeah.
Any opposed? And we have Counselor Penya on the phone, so this passes unanimously. And we have floor amendment number five, and this is Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And this is my last amendment. So this is on page six, after line thirty-one, insert the following: New park development land acquisition, seventeen GeoBond. The scope of the project expanded to include the renovation of existing facilities at North Minga Bock up to a total amount of $175,000. And this explanation, this designates 175,000 of existing park development funds for improvements at North Minga Park related to a planned construction of a 9/11 memorial at this site. We used to, if you, when the new Fire Station 20 was built, and we had 9/11, they put a memorial up for that. And they put a plaque up, and they planted these two exotic trees. But what happened is they died, and the plaque's still up, and there's no memorial. So I've been working with the fire chief and the administration to really plan a memorial there, and it's been designed, and it will really kind of show the involvement of Albuquerque and what Albuquerque did for the 9/11. And so I urge your support.
Second? Do we have a second? We had a second by Counselor Davis. Okay, any discussion? Counselor Jones? Okay, being no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And we are on to count floor amendment number six. And floor amendment number six is my amendment, and this is on page eight, after line sixteen, insert the following: Of the amount appropriated for this project, $100,000 is designated for facility improvements at the Don Newton Taylor Ranch Community Center, including but not limited to replacement of window blinds and HABC, HBAC improvements. And basically, this money had already been designated, and we're just stating the specifics as to what it can be used for. Thank you. So there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying yes? Yes? Counselor Penya?
Yeah.
Any opposed? No? Thank you. That passes unanimously. And our next floor amendment is floor amendment number seven, and this is Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I move floor amendment number seven. This reads on page four, delete lines eleven through thirteen: This amendment will maintain the scope of the 2013 GeoBond project for Santa Barbara Martinez Town in lieu of expanding it for citywide projects. Just to be clear, councilors, this is an ongoing project. They did some neighborhood decision-making on their own as to what the important projects for traffic calming that they considered, and they got some state funding added to the project this year. So we want to maintain this and complete the project.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, signify by saying yes? Yes? Counselor Penya? Counselor Penya? I think we lost her.
Yeah.
Oh, there she is. Okay, so that passes unanimously. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Floor amendment number eight, and this is also Counselor Benton.
Thank you. I move floor amendment number eight. This states on page four, delete lines sixteen through seventeen: This amendment would maintain the scope of the 2015 GeoBond project for the first street and central pedestrian crossing in lieu of expanding to citywide projects.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, councilors, signify by saying yes, if you will. Yes? Counselor Penya? There's a little delayed reaction there. Counselor Penya? Did we lose her? We may have lost her. Okay, so that actually passes on an eight-zero vote. Floor amendment number nine, Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And I'll move floor amendment, or number nine, which states on page seven, lines five, twelve, and nineteen: After the term metropolitan redevelopment areas, insert the following in Council District Two. This is the remaining Elvato funding, keeping it within District Two.
There's a motion and a second for floor amendment number nine. Any discussion? Seeing none, councilors, signify by saying yes? Yes? Any opposed? Okay, so that passes on an eight-zero vote.
Madam Vice President, if you could give us a minute, we could try and get Counselor Penya back on the line.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so we are going to move on to R-142. And, oh, I'm sorry, we need a final vote for R-142. We had a motion and a second. Any discussion, councilors? As amended. Thank you, Counselor Davis. So all in favor, signify by saying yes? Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? No? Okay, so that passes on a nine-zero, because we have Counselor Penya back on the line. Okay, so item number C, I am going to move this for Counselor Penya. This is R-144, approving and authorizing a grant application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for a 2019 continuum of care grant and providing an appropriation to the Department of Family and Community Services beginning of fiscal year 2019. I move a do-pass.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Has anyone signed up to speak? Nobody signed up to speak. Any discussion, councilors? No? Okay, so I urge your support. All in favor, signify by saying yes? Yes?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. So Counselor Benton, item D.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Item D is R-151, amending the adopted capital implementation program for the City of Albuquerque by approving new projects and changing the scope of existing projects relating to the District Two council neighborhood set aside. I move a do-pass.
There's a motion and a second for R-151.
And Madam Vice President, I move the amendment that's in your iPads. This is all related, again, to the District Two set aside.
There's a motion for the amendment for Counselor Benton's bill. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Counselor Sanchez?
I just had one question, and that question's going to probably be for Mrs. Yara. Regarding the original and amended bill, do both of those equate to $1 million?
Madam Vice President and Counselor Sanchez, yes. So the difference is that we had originally drafted as taking 300,000 for public safety when Counselor Benton intended only 30,000 for specific projects. So both versions, it's balanced to a million dollars for his district.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so Counselor Benton to close?
Urge your support.
Motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying yes? Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? No? Okay, that passes unanimously. So we will move on to item numbers, let's see.
It's Madam Vice President, I think I need a final vote on that bill as amended.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we have to go back to the original bill. So we passed the amendment, and we are going to vote on the, is there any other discussion on the bill itself? Counselor Benton?
Urge your support.
Councilors, signify by saying yes? Yes?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Okay, Counselor Benton, item E.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Item E is P-2, adopting a proposition to be submitted to the voters at the November 5th, 2019, regular local election, proposing to amend Article Four, Sections One, Two, Three of the Albuquerque City Charter concerning council districts. I move a do-pass. And councilors, this is an amendment, this is conceptually something we've discussed over the years, especially around the time of the last redistricting. But in the most simple terms, in the last redistricting, the growth on the West Side resulted in a situation where basically we lost, we combined two districts on the near center of the East Side into my current district, District Two. It's the largest district in terms of geography and in terms of population. It's the largest district in terms of pocket of poverty designations. At the time of that last redistricting, there were many concerns raised with regard to dilution of minority voting strength, and voting strength really amongst communities of interest. Communities of interest, when we're talking about censuses and redistricting, communities of interest typically have common interests, such as, say, for instance, the rural North Valley versus the more urban and central part of downtown, and the old neighborhoods that surround downtown are quite different from the historically rural North Valley. This would be a way to alleviate this. It would add two council districts. We did, back at the time that we looked at this previously, we did a fiscal impact analysis that, I meant to have that in the packet, but we'll get that and make that available to the councilors. This will require a second hearing, at least one other hearing, before we vote on it. But I just wanted to explain that dynamic, and I think it would be hard to alleviate the problems that we have with the center-city district without adding the two council districts. It would bring this, it'd bring us very much in line with the comparable cities that we looked at. We had staff take a look at peer cities, which included New Orleans, El Paso, some of the others, Boston, yeah, thank you, Tucson, Fort Worth, Charlotte, a lot of cities, and looked at the number of residents per council district. If we, and when we passed the charter back in the seventies, the city was about quarter million people. Today, we are well over double that. When we looked at these other cities, the average council district was around 53,000 people. This would bring our, to our median council district, I guess if you will, average size of a council district, right around to that size. So that's really what it's about. It's also about, I think, giving more opportunity to, to some of the people who did raise their voices eight years ago and nine years ago, to have their unique communities of interest represented. So that's what it's really about. And I think the, there was one question raised by Ms. Duhigg, our city clerk, about this, and I think Chris is going to work on an amendment to deal with that. The intention of this would be, everyone asks, well, what is it going to look like if we do this? And the answer is, we'll go through our regular redistricting process, and we'd do it for 11 instead of for nine. So that would be, the census would occur in 2000. After that census, we would use our normal process of coming up with maps and considering those, and there's a, that's all established in our, I guess it's the charter. Is that right, how we determine that? Or is that by ordinance? Anyway, there's a committee structure that's made up representatives of the administration and the council, who decides on the final maps that are created, so.
We have three people signed up to speak on this bill. So before we have a discussion with the council, would you agree to listen to them? We have Lucille Long, Art Tannenbaum, and Stephen Baca. Ms. Long, are you available?
I thought I had signed up for the voters.
Oh.
I think she may have.
You were, you were signing up then for item number three?
P three.
P three? This is?
P three, yes.
Okay, so I'm going to cross your name off this list.
Seriously, the phone-in nonsense is crazy. I don't know why, I don't know if you could possibly be any more unruly and disorderly. And on decorum, Chris is Mr. Melendris, Sarita is Ms. Nyer. I know you all are unaccustomed to the notion, the concept of reciprocal respect, but if you expect people to address you with proper decorum, I suggest you do the same. Don't call Ms. Nyer Sarita, and don't call Mr. Melendris Chris, please.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So I've long thought that the city would be better served by fewer city councilors instead of more. I think the City of Albuquerque would be better off if we had one city council member from each of the four quadrants of the city, and one counselor-at-large, or probably better if we had three councilors-at-large. This would eliminate the intense tribalism, which is just a natural outcome of the cost accounting system that pits departments and people against each other. So the whole redistricting thing, oh, and I was very surprised to hear there's no fiscal No fiscal analysis.
I said there is a fiscal analysis that'll be distributed.
Pardon me?
Mr. Tannenbaum, he said that there was a fiscal analysis distributed. There is one.
Oh, I apologize for my misunderstood. Anyway, yeah, I really think the city would be better served if we had one city council member from each of the four quadrants of the city, and either one or three councilors-at-large. I think the city as a whole would be better served. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Baca, Stephen Baca?
Hello, good evening, councilors. I'm Stephen Baca. I am speaking on this issue because it's kind of ridiculous to have a, let me see.
Sorry, sir.
All right, no problem.
We'll start over.
All right, good evening, council members. I'm Stephen Baca. I'm a...
We're having some tough, technical difficulties.
All right, we good?
I think we are, yes.
All right, good evening, city councilors. I'm Stephen Baca. I'm speaking on this issue because it kind of affects the district I'm running for as a city council member, to run for office. I'm fully willing to do the job of the district as it currently sits now. I think it's ridiculous that we're going to separate more districts and create, and spend more money, creating more problems. It's kind of ridiculous that the same city councilors who are pushing the ranked choice voting issue are complaining about money, and they're willing to spend money, and spend more money on districts, when they could easily represent the constituents in that district. They're essentially saying that they don't want to represent half the constituents in their current district. To me, that is completely ridiculous. City councilors have been fine working on the current system for a long time, and I think that system's just still the same place. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we had a motion and a second to, hang on, Counselor. And now we have a floor amendment, and this is sponsored by Counselor Benton.
Madam Vice President, Mr. Melendris to explain.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
This is the issue raised by the city clerk.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Counselor Benton, speaking with the city clerk, she thought it might be helpful to clarify that if the 11 districts proposal were to pass, that it couldn't become effective until after the city's decennial redistricting was completed, because that would be the process that would create those two extra districts. And so in theory, this could pass the electorate in 2019, and so on the books, we'd have 11, but functionally, we wouldn't be able to have the full 11 until after redistricting. And so this amendment clarifies that this would become effective as part of the city's redistricting program.
Counselor Benton? Did you want to move your amendment?
Yes, I'll move it. That would be amendment number one, and this will require two hearings, so.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for a floor amendment. Any discussion? Councilors, all in favor, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, so that passes on an eight to, Counselor Penya, are you on the phone? So that passes on an eight to one vote. Okay, so Counselor Benton, we're back on your bill, and this is, this is going to need a motion for deferral until June 17th.
Yeah, prepare to make that motion, Madam Vice President. Just wanted to see if any councilors wanted to weigh in or...
Counselor Sanchez, Counselor Harris?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I have some concerns regarding from going from a nine-member board to an 11-member board. The United States Senate across America has two U.S. senators. In New Mexico, based on the population, we have three members in the United States Congress. The county commission here in Burnley County has five members, and they represent a lot larger number of people. And we are, and I know you have represented the West Side, I have also, and I still continue to do so. And we look back historically, and this is all based on the census. You know, the West Side at one time only had one member representing the entire West Side, along with the Valley Gardens area, and that has gone from two, and now we have three members. And based on the census, I mean, we will not know what happens until the new census is completed. But I just believe that the nine-member board has worked very effectively. But I just believe that the nine-member board has worked very effectively. Councillor Benton, both you and I came into office at the exact same time. You're now representing an even number of districts, so you're up for reelection this time. But I feel that we've all done an incredible job in the work we've done in representing the people that we represent, and I just don't feel having an additional two members will make that big of a difference. I know there would be two additional city councilors representing the area, but I think we've done a pretty effective job with nine members, and seeing that the U.S. Senate has two, Congress has three, the county commission has five, I just don't see why we would have to go to an eleven, eleven-member board.
Councillor Harris, and then councillor Gibson.
Well, I've spoken with councillor Benton, I guess I can call him Ike, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so that way we treat each other with equal respect. So, yeah, I mean, Ike and I talked about this. I'm not in favor of it, but I'm certainly vote for the deferral, so we can discuss it some more in another, another hearing. I, I think that the council that we have, I mean, it's not always easy, it's not always collegial, we like it, but I think the larger you become, the more balkanized you could become, and I think, I kinda like the way we're doing things now, and, and I don't think I'm gonna vote for it when it gets here, but I'll certainly vote to defer it and keep it, so we can discuss it some more.
Councillor Gibson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice President. So, I, I'm not sure I'm totally on board with this, but I can certainly see the arguments being made for it. You know, a, as the districts grow, there are many, many more issues that come up, many more problems, particularly in parts of the city that are older than, than some of the other newer parts of the city. You know, streets have, have problems and, and need repairs and modifications and things that nature. Parks, that's a huge thing for, for District Seven, and I'm, I'm sure that's true for some of, of you as well. So, you know, I, I, I think that I would just like to think about this a little bit more, and then, and be happy to hear some of the other perspectives as, as we defer this until the, until it's heard again. But I, I, I can understand and agree with a lot of the arguments to be made for, for this, at least putting it on the ballot. Thank you.
Councillor Benton, and then councillor Sanchez, and then councillor Jones.
Well, thanks for pointing that out. This would be just to put this on the ballot, and there would be, of course, a more robust discussion. I'm sure any, any of us, we're, are gonna have our own opinion about it, and we'd have our one vote at the ballot, if we were to allow it to go to the voters. Just with regard to councillor Sanchez's argument, I did not oppose there being three West Side districts. I would characterize those three West Side districts as being very different from one another, each one really representing a community of interest. The far northwest side, the center northwest side, and the southwest district represented by councillor Penya, each a unique community of interest. And I think this is the point, this is a concern I have. It's not that, that I don't like representing the sixty thousand-plus people I do represent, it's that they are such diverse communities of interest. When you talk to people in the North Valley, that's what they love, that's what they chose, that's the place they chose to live. The more rural area, the historic North Valley, as opposed to those who live in downtown and the neighborhoods surrounding downtown, or for, for whatever reasons, that, that they live there. Some choose to have moved there, a lot of younger population in the, in the urban center. And then, again, a lot of the old neighborhoods that, that were the ring around downtown, that, that grew up around downtown, and downtown was their main street. So, that's what it's really about. It's not about growing government, it's not about having to deal with two other councilors, which we would have to do on the city council, and, and many other cities do have much larger bodies that, that are their legislative body. So, and, and I know that, that I see COOL thinking, oh, man, two more of these people to have to wrangle with, especially when budget time comes around. But you know what? Those two additional counselors would be going to bat for a distinct, a more distinct area, and I think those constituents would be better represented. However, that slices and dices after the, after the election. So, you know, if we're playing the numbers game, councillor Sanchez, I mean, I would say that a state senate district is well under fifty thousand, they don't deal with nearly the, the daily contacts that we get in our offices, but just, just if we're playing the numbers game.
I believe I said councillor Sanchez, councillor Jones, and now councillor Gibson also.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. President, just real quickly, councillor Gibson, for clarification, I mean, the older districts may not get additional representation because the population is moving towards different quadrants of the city. I mean, I'd love to see the downtown areas start to grow again, which it's starting to, but again, they may not get any more representation. That representation could possibly go to the entire West Side because of the growth.
Councillor, councillor Jones, and then councillor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, this is one that I understand both sides of it, but having been through the redistricting a few years ago, like eight now, probably, going on ten, it's very interesting how this is done. I had never done it before in the, right in the, on the front line. But basically, the districts are set up by statute, I believe, based on as equal as possible demographic, that would be members, numbers of population, profile of the population, income, size, and keeping it all together. So, no matter whether we have nine or eleven, they're gonna end up being basically looking alike as much as possible. Even ethnicity comes into play in these things. So, it's, it's gonna be very, very interesting. I don't see a reason for two more, because I believe redistricting will probably take care of this. And I am very fiscally conservative, and I have a real issue about adding the expense to the city of two more counselors, two more million-dollar budgets per person or more, ten million or so. Even though it's the same streets and the same roads and the same people, now that there are two more counselors, those two more counselors will be getting the same amounts of money to spend each as we do, and now we're talking, we're, we're getting into some real money now in three commas on everything we're doing. And that makes me very, very nervous. We have already increased our overhead in the city. It seems like every time we happen to be lucky enough to take in a little more money, like right now, our grocery receipts tax is up. We seem to find ways to spend far more than we need to spend without controlling what we have. So, I believe this is a, this is a free-for-all, that I can't imagine that the taxpayers would like to have this happen. I think we have to look very carefully at, because council does, does get to be intimately involved in the redistricting. I think we have to be very careful about not saddling a counselor with, with what councillor Benton has had to do for a few years, and it just kept compounding. So, we wanna make sure that every area, every, every type of person, every type of, of area and income and sociological, sociological thing can be represented as equally as possible in the districts. Obviously, not absolutely equal, because we have different parts of the city, from how they grew, what's their, the district that I represent is basically a bedroom community. A lot of the West Side is a bedroom community, but it doesn't mean that we're not working hard also. So, I think, I'm, I'm not comfortable with this, councillor Benton, I see where you're coming from, but I think we need to take a look at redistricting before we do anything like this. Thank you.
Councillor Gibson? Well, I, personally, I think it's kind of unprecedented, Bill. I think the timing is a little bit off, councillor, because it is an election year, and we have councilors that are up for election. And I agree with councillor Jones in terms of the census, and I did work as a staff person on the census on the other side, when we did redistricting twice, actually, in 2020 and 2010. And I really think that we need to wait to see what the census shows in terms of population, and then let the redistricting process take its course. And so, I think this bill is just a little bit premature, so I, I probably won't, I'll, I'll be open to listening, but I'm, I'm not sure that I can support this also. So, with that, councillor, would you like to move a deferral?
Yes, I would. And just, just a quick response before we do that. I do think the, the point about the district set-asides is something that, I don't know that that would need to go to the voters of something of that detail, but I think we need to talk about what that means. I think, from my perspective, honestly, I thought we would take the, what we have for our district set-asides, divide it by eleven instead of nine, but something along those lines. But, but, but anyway, we do need to, and if you would, as soon as you can, Steph, I know that that was based on thirteen council districts when we looked at that previously, but I think the numbers are probably pretty accurate as far as what it would cost staff-wise and so forth.
Yes, Madam Vice President, councillor Benton, I can update the numbers from that last variation, and of course, at that time, we were adding four counselors, I just needed to, and update the costs and the salaries.
And just a quickly response to the timeliness of this, it is extremely timely. This really is probably the last shot we would get to do this, and it's, I mean, this is the reason it probably needs to be on this ballot. It could conceivably be on the general election ballot in twenty, but this seems like would be the time to do it if we're going to do it. So, I'll move that deferral.
Councillor Jones?
Me, just one more. And Ms. Nyer, don't forget that additional twenty thousand dollar slush fund for each counselor now will go up to eleven counselors.
We could divide that by eleven also.
Okay, we have a motion to defer this until June seventeenth. Is there a second? Motion and a second, all in favors, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed?
No.
Councillor Penya? Councillor Penya?
She said no.
No?
No.
And I would also say no. So, it's a six, two, three vote. Okay, so let's move on. You guys having fun yet? We are moving on to item number F, which is councillor Harris. Oh, we have, actually, we have also added item G, which is O nineteen fifty-four, and I believe that both of these are also requiring...
Point of order, Madam, that, that motion to pull that was for, to move it to the seventeenth, so we're not...
Oh, so that one moved to the seventeenth, I'm sorry. Okay. So, councillor Harris, P three?
Yes, and this, this is also a first hearing, and it's probably gonna be the first of three hearings. So, all we can do is talk about it and defer it, but I'll, for the sake of starting to discuss it, I'll go ahead and I'll move a do-pass of P three.
There's a motion and a second for P three?
And councillors, yeah, we, we've heard all, all the arguments. I don't know if there, anyone, oh, it looks like there could be some public comments, so, Madam Vice President, you might wanna go to public comment?
We do have public comment, but there's also an amendment.
I'm, I'm going to hold the amendment because I'm speaking with the city clerk, and also hearing from the, the public comment tonight, one of the comments was that if we do it in a charter, we lock it in, whereas we can be more flexible through an ordinance, so I think I, we'd like to get a floor substitute, which would, would give council more flexibility to, to create the contours of ranked choice voting by ordinance. So, that, that would be a, kind of a substantial change to what's in here now, and, but we still do have time, because we were working with the clerk and the administration, and probably our legal staff, and get a, a floor substitute, and then the seventeenth would be the first hearing, and then the first meeting in August would be the second hearing, and that gives us barely enough time to get it on the ballot. I think we have to, absolutely positively have to get things by the last meeting in August to get on the ballot in November, but ideally, we wanna get everything done by the first meeting in August, just so we, we have enough wiggle room in case some, we fall down somehow, or something falls off the table, we can still fix it in time to get it on the ballot.
Okay, and the count, the city clerk is in the audience. Before we go to our public speakers, did you wanna comment on, on that?
Thank you, Madam Vice President, councillor, yes. As long as this, there was the final action on this by the, I believe it's your August seventeenth meeting, that would be sufficient to, to get it on the ballot. Ideally, it'd be better to get it done earlier, but that would be the absolute deadline for it to be on the ballot for this November.
August third would be ideal.
That would be better, yes.
Councillor Sanchez?
Thank you. I have a question for either, either the clerk or the sponsor, because I heard the word ordinance in this amendment. This is a proposition, is that correct?
This is a, this is a proposition that would change our charter to allow, as the floor substitute would propose, it would allow the city council to enact an ordinance that would address ranked choice voting. The prop, but right now, our city charter does not allow for ranked choice voting, it would actually violate our charter. And we'll debate it later, but I, I think we, we answer to the citizens of Albuquerque not to, you know, a hundred people up in Santa Fe, and, and our citizens have made it very difficult to change our charter, I think we should respect that, and, and I was, well, anyway, there's a lot, lots we can debate about, and I just assume I'll hold off on that debate, but let's listen to the public, and then we can also move a deferral after we do.
I'd like to ask one more question of the city attorney. Don't all ordinances need to be published?
Madam Vice President, councillor Sanchez, yes.
Councillor Gibson?
I need to get some clarification, because I'm confused right now, because we have an ordinance that would allow, if passed, ranked choice voting, and then we have your legislation, which would put it on the ballot. And so, so if we write, if we pass the ordinance, instead of allowing it to go onto the ballot, is that illegal? Is that something that, that's not provided for now? I'm totally confused.
Can the city attorney, can you respond to that?
Madam Vice President, councillor Gibson, really to answer your question, that, no, I mean, yes. Try, one more time, if you wouldn't mind, but if it's illegal, no. I mean, doing it in this mechanism, the Local Election Act does allow municipalities to do that, however, our charter is in conflict with that act, and so, I mean, it's, there's a lot...
Okay, so we, we don't wanna do anything illegal, but the city clerk's right there, and I wonder if she might be able to shed some light?
Yes, Madam Vice President, councillor Gibson, yes, it is permissible to do this by ordinance. State law in this area supersedes our charter. It would allow it to be done by ordinance, so it can be done by ordinance, but it does not have to be. The city still has the option to do it via charter amendment if, if it chooses to.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Harris has one more question.
So, in this, the state law was changed, not this last session, but the session before in two thousand and eighteen. So, the sponsors have had well over a year to do this, if they wanted to, before now. So, there's, part of the problem I have with this ordinance is that it's kinda late in the game. But, and anyway, to answer councillor Gibson's question, it's kinda like the supremacy clause of a federal statute overrides a state statute, it can do that, and then we're, we're just stuck with our state law on the books, although it's unenforceable, and this would allow us to pass an ordinance under a state statute, which when essentially, then we have an ordinance which is contrary to our charter, but the charter provision just kinda falls away because of the state law. Is that one way of looking at it?
Madam Vice President, councillor Harris, absolutely.
Okay, that clarifies that. Councillor Gibson?
Yeah, one more thing, but that's totally apart from the ranked choice voting. That's something totally, something else that, that you're talking about doing. Is that correct?
The rank, what I would like to see is that the people decide how they wanna vote, because it's such an important right, is how you vote. But in terms of that procedural thing, I think it, we're all getting to ranked choice voting, and ultimately, I suspect an ordinance will be passed, but I believe we should have the voters amend the charter, respect our charter, and then after we've amended the charter, then pass an ordinance which is consistent with our charter.
So, that clarifies that, I think. And, and the good news is that we have, we are looking to defer this until June seventeenth, so that'll give us some time to clarify this further if there's still confusion. Is that appropriate? Okay, so let's go on to P nineteen thirty-three, public comment, and we have... And we have seven people signed up to speak. We have Sally Beers, followed by Stephen Baca, followed by Art Tannenbaum. Sally Beers? Stephen Baca? Mr. Tannenbaum? Looks like your first. Followed by David Tenorio? And I don't see that he's here.
I was scheduled to.
Oh, ma'am.
I was scheduled to.
Right, and I will add your name to this list. Thank you. Mr. Tannenbaum?
Ms. Borrego, thank you again for your time this evening. After hearing this last confusing exchanges, the expression, "Don't just do something, sit there," comes to mind. Obviously, you don't know what you're doing. Anyway, the ranked choice voting system, I summarize it as striving towards mediocrity. I did find some of the arguments in favor of the ranked choice voting compelling, especially Gus Pedradie, I paid attention to him. But it's my understanding that maybe an increase in voter turnout is just short-lived and a result of the novelty of something new. New things are very appealing. So if I'm not mistaken, if I wanted to vote for candidate A, I could not select candidate A as my first and second choice? And this would make diluted and more, well, in any event, it's a more complicated mathematical formula. And it's not unheard of here in Albuquerque that somewhat complicated mathematical formulas in the voting process have screwed things up. And the solution to that was to just say, "Well, we screwed up, sorry, we did the formula wrong." Also, I've got to say, because there's so much distrust that is well-earned by the re-elected members of the council, I can only look at this as someone trying to advance personal ambition under the guise of doing something noble for the public. In other words, saving money, and again, this is a fraction of a percent, it's a negligible amount of money. So I don't trust your motives, and I don't like the proposed system. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. David Tenorio? Looks like Mr. Tenorio has left. Candace Brower? Looks like Mrs. Brower has left. Rich Weiner? Looks like he has left as well. William Orr? About 1,000 here. Ms. Long?
Madam Vice President and Counselor Harris, I want to thank you for bringing this to our attention and looking at this process. I've done a lot of research, and I am seeing that it does decrease costs, and the, it does help in elections where there's more than two, two people running, and it does increase voter attendance. But some of the questions that I have is, what is the cost to implement? Do we have all the right equipment and resources to implement this during this election? My concern also is that there's a perception that the council is rushing into it when we've already passed the public funding portion of the election process. So those are some of the concerns. And then what happens to the voter's vote that goes to someone they definitely don't want? I've never seen one of these ballots, so I have a lot of questions. And then again, will the clerk's office be prepared to make sure that this process is fair? And rushing it really concerns me. So, Counselor Harris, I do want to thank you for at least, you know, proposing the idea. But I am for the voter.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so we'll come back to the council. Any other discussion? Counselor Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I have a question for the city clerk. I know there was, many of the speakers talked about, you know, the cost being $1 million if we have a special election. There's four council districts up for reelection, that's districts 2, 4, 6, and 8. If there was one or two runoffs, would that cost exceed $1 million, say, I know that $1 million cost kept coming up?
Madam Vice President, Counselor Sanchez, no, I don't believe it would. I don't think that those were accurate numbers being proposed this evening.
You know what those numbers would be? Say, if there was one runoff, two runoffs, three runoffs, or even the four districts were in runoff?
When I did some quick math during the budget time, trying to figure out if there was a runoff in all districts, how much would we need to have set aside? My belief was that it would be about 400,000. I don't think, I have heard, I have not heard this from the county clerk, I have heard from others, that the county clerk believes that she would have to open every voting location in the city for any runoff. I have not heard that from her directly, but I don't think that's correct. I don't think that would be, it would be necessary to open every voting location in the city.
Because I believe in the last mayoral election, in the council races that may have had a runoff, that they consolidated the precincts, so there wasn't every single location. They did a large consolidation of voting places.
Yes, Counselor Sanchez, I, there would be, I believe it would just be the voter convenience centers that are within the boundaries of that district would be necessary to have open for runoff for that district.
Thank you.
Madam Vice President, and...
Counselor Harris?
And thank you. And I have kind of the unique position of being, you know, I call myself sometimes the most elected counselor, because I went through a general and a runoff and a recall. And I was in the runoff when it was the only election in town, and they only had one convenience center. They didn't actually call them convenience centers, but there's only one polling place, which was downtown on like Broadway and Fourth or something, so, at the Record Center. So, based on that precedent, there's no reason why we have to have voting centers all over town. And then when they did have the actual runoff election, that was for early voting, and in the runoff election, they just had the voting centers in the district.
Counselor Benton? And then, I'm sorry, Counselor Davis, and then Counselor Benton?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And just a request, Madam Clerk, it would be, I think, because we're now operating under the new Local Elections Act, that's changed some of the rules, and I think it's not clear, just because we haven't been through this process yet, whose responsibility is, for example, to pass, to decide where the early voting locations are. That's generally in the past been a decision of the city council, based on the recommendation of the clerk, but since the county clerk will now run those, I think it would be, if it's possible, I think it would be super helpful if you could provide, either by memo or a very brief presentation at our next meeting, sort of what the runoff system would look like under the new rules. I don't know myself sort of how the new law impacts that, and as we're all trying to digest that new piece of legislation, I'm not sure anyone has taken a comprehensive look at what that would look like besides your office, but that would be super helpful if you'd be willing to do that for us. Thanks.
Counselor Benton?
I think I have my question answered.
Any other questions? Counselor Harris, would you like to make the motion to defer this to June 17?
I make a motion to defer until June 17.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying yes. Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.